This conference will now be recorded.
Here we go.
I recall the November 30th, 2020 work sessions. Are there any additions or removal of any items tonight? Do you want to make a motion? Oh, make a motion. I have to make a call roll.
Counselor Webb?
Right.
Counselor McNair?
Right.
Mayor Hobart?
Right.
Counselor Allen?
Right.
Counselor Wagner?
Right.
Motion carried.
I'm going to go.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is Stephanie's, based on score, the averages. There's a number of them that staff identified currently going on and then some ones that kind of have not even started. So I don't know if in the ultimate priorities, do you guys care about that or don't care about that? Or just keep them, do separate lists? Or just keep them one whole list, even if some of the things that are not on your higher priority list are currently in the works, if that makes sense? No, there's just a couple that we would propose taking off and then a couple that are currently in work but way down to the bottom. So if this is the order you're wanting staff to tackle things in, that's what I'm saying, some of the things that are happening are down at the bottom. So I don't want you to get upset that something down here is getting worked on or completed because it's low on your priority. So I have considered for wrong that either the priorities developed in the county that will all be going along with the one, not two, the rest of the gather things that aren't in process or that are tops. Maybe done waiting for that to work. It's not going to be for top tier in our part. Yeah, just if this, I just want to counsel to understand. If we're going in the order and you guys are going to be puffed by that, well, we're getting something that's down to the bottom of the list because it's currently happening. I want to be clear that your priority isn't matching kind of what's going on, right?
So in that way, your orders aren't very
Yeah.
Part of it is just the right we might have already here, they're going to give us
Right.
So that
Yeah.
It's really hard for priority. Let's say like previous order, plan, fairly on pretty biased and teaching to that.
Right, so case in point, number three is the Springboard sewer project. You don't even apply for that until February.
Good, good.
Yeah. So I know it's everyone's priority, but other than getting our decks in the row and getting that location ready, we don't have work to do on that. And then once we do it, like there's like a waiting game until they pour down a wall.
And see, this is the view. Because even though that number three, our high expectation priority for the council, reality is time frame of how we is, is that holds up?
Yeah.
Is that?
Okay.
All right.
And then a couple of the things we were on there, we couldn't say, we thought they were potential issues, but really we found out it's not. They're at a point where they're no longer a city issue. Um, it's, we cannot cover, so that it's well, let's just say the pattern score of 11.4. This Third Street Storm Sewer issue for Schaefer. So that was a brilliant city issue more unless we're going to pay Third Street. There's no, no more to do until there's curb and gutter on Third Street. The rock, there's been a rock placed there and it is what it is. His basement was getting water in it. But that's partly because that pool hill has springs and very little of them was actually run out from the street into his, kind of find out. So that's one where there's nothing more to do, so I'm proposing you just take it off there because it's not like a project the city can do.
Correct me, is that the one that you guys, uh, neighbors are kind of collaborating?
No, so this is Third Street, right below Lincoln.
Right.
And so we solve the Lincoln issue.
Right.
And then he lives on the downhill side of Third Street while there's springs and stuff, so his basement's collecting water. He had a drain that got clogged in the bottom. And so it really is, the city can't do anything, whatever's happening is on private property. It's not happening like water coming across the street into him or something like that.
No.
So that's why.
I think I missed the, that the issue. What, what's the problem? I don't know. Realign them.
So when we did the storm at Lincoln?
No.
He's talking about Steeple Sewer issue.
Yeah.
That's 7.2.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's there and I have that, it's currently happening.
Well, just for my, what was it?
The Steeple Sewer issue. Yeah, that one's up. Yeah, so Schaefer is just one that was on there from a couple of years ago, the one that dressed well, he could have been. And he does seem to be having the problem, so.
I think we get the problem.
Okay. And then a follow up to that one is 14.8 is the average, the Green Bridge Engineering Review. So a couple of years back, the past mayor Harrison had wanted her son or us, the city, to get an independent engineering review of the Green Bridge. Because we didn't fully worry about what's happening. When we looked into that, it was pretty cause prohibitive. And ultimately, ODOT is not going to take our private engineering report as gospel, so to speak. So I don't know that that's something we want to try and do. Because we're just going to use their names, their reporting, their engineering to prove our fault. So unless you guys really want to go out for an engineering review, I don't know exactly where the money, how profit is. A good time to change, when we looked at it, it was 7, 800 or something, was the estimate when we looked at it.
ODOT.
They just did an engineering report, I'm waiting to get it from her at ODOT. Uh, in 2018, they did one. And then they did some spectating, but not a report, um, in 2019. That's one we can take, because I think when we leave them on here, that's just going to confuse new people or confuse the public that they were doing some sort of engineering review, or thought that was going to do.
I think maybe most of why we're back, we were speaking currently do on getting back into
Yeah.
bidding.
Well, yeah, we could take, we could rename it, rename something, but it's not a good idea. If you guys want to rename it, you know, rename the bridge. Uh, we're exploring the idea of looking at other groups to help us replace.
Advocating?
Or just rename it renovation. We could do the 2021, 2023, uh, repair plant on the Green Bridge.
Yeah, because then I could just keep bringing it up where it's slated to be, either be fixed or be pulled off.
It kind of true. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm getting, leaving it on.
For you to.
I just want to clarify, we're not going after the engineering review.
That wasn't really thinking. I think I wrote it, I changed on my list. It was something that was more afraid of. I was gonna please listen again and see what they're saying.
Yeah.
We don't ever bug them, nothing on it.
Okay.
There was that one, I, there was a couple that was, or what was going on?
Okay.
Uh, the old dump site closure. What's the status on that?
Yeah, so that's kind of currently in the state's hands, so the old dump site, I've notes. Uh, the city's owned it forever. We currently pay group fee for monitoring. Uh, and it's been enough years, but the state's pulling close out of that monitoring, they call it dump. However, Mary Ann Boden lives right, our driveway, the dump is her driveway. And her, she doesn't use her well. Not because of something specifically the dump, that it never performed, but it's got, we had all different things like that. The piece is what used to be the bad old well. And in order to close that out, we have to work with the state and get a grant through them, for them to replace and get a renewed well. So that each individual property has its own functioning well before they will decommission the old dump. Because in their brain, it looks like their, the reason she didn't use it could be leaching, even though it has been not currently leaching. So I'm working with the state, uh, through their funding, which is kind of up in the air for this COVID, uh, for mediating that well. I talked to Mary Ann and she's all for it. In the future, if you ever want to sell the property, it would have a functioning well, which would be connected to someone else. So that's what we're at.
Or.
Yeah, but her dump property is still in the family, but that could be sold someday to someone else. So that's that.
Everything's true. It's just that issue.
Yeah, then getting the grant lined up and then doing the drill in, installing a new wall. Pretty.
Those eight wells. Our big well, hurricane.
So that's, that, that average. What was the other one, right?
Well. Like the weed avenue, sewage. Mark water.
Yeah, so we, like I told you guys, we got funded through the small city logging grant, 100,000 for Spencer, Alabama, and weed, the section of weed. So the stormwater project will happen before the paving. We've already got the engineering and sidewalk review, and that's going to take West Oregon Electric and Palston or Stormwater back down the weed and discharge it in the Atlas, close the Mallos Barracks. So those two buildings will be coming into Barracks, which we can use for the pot. Along with logging up the canyon and some of the short-term flooding in winters. So that'll happen before the paving.
Yeah. The RFP for audit search.
Yeah, so that's another one that potentially can come off. So typically, we do requests for proposals, and this was really driven by that amount of money that our audits were coming up each year. But in doing the survey with other cities, we're all paying that observant, there's no need to sit for price. So we have foregone going out for our people, a lot of work for staff to get all the documentation and the stuff, postings and everything, only to find out we still have a pretty good they're going out for our people. At this, at this.
What are they called?
No, so it costs 21 now. Usical cost nine when I was up there, uh, '09. Uh, and it's just steadily, they kind of have a racket going on it because cities have to do it and then there's only a few firms to do it. That keep up on all the rules and changes and all.
I have a whole line of questions.
Okay. Anybody else have questions on ones they don't know what they are? So I think so the other one that's kind of out of our hands a little bit, I'll just state this to everyone so that you understand, is the Bear Creek Culvert at Adams. That's really contingent on the Springboard Sewer Project going through, so we can decommission the sewer pipe that kind of biceps the creek right there. And once we can decommission that, it can just be removed and a regular box culvert can be put in at Adams with a, with a top. The steel plate can come out, but currently there's a pipe that goes from the bank straight into the bed of the creek. It is really difficult to try and get a culvert.
34, so we'll
Yeah, I think it's metal. I think it's metal with this.
Probably do for, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, there's a
Yeah. No. It's a, all the, that, where the steel plate's sitting on that concrete edge there. But it isn't like this whole concrete box culvert, which would probably be the best. Yeah.
Or maybe do and if you want something, you could get on the list for the, think about the water shit and
Uh, that's who are working with, and ODFW. So the Springboard project that we talked about, people have a force made, it's going back to the fireworks, people allow us to bypass the, first that ODFW doesn't like with the water falls and the confluence and then that pipe in the Barracks, those could be removed to take away then at the obstructions and then you can put in something that looks fish and everything. But now you need ODFW to lock the whole project up there. And we, we walked Bear Creek, talking about the different culverts that are failing and they're even disrupting streets here. And how those are inhibiting and causing obstruction, obstruction for fish passage.
Fair, fine, fine, because that's
Yeah, so that's the Springboard one, we applied for the funding inspector. If we get it with the design, then that would be a September award, so it's not a October one. So it would be until October, October 21st, which if you know that.
Do you want a fish ladder?
They want a fish ladder. Yeah. Or juvenile set of
At the Bear Creek. There's a 28th or 29th. I'm on, really, that's 50. Um, what did I say?
So.
And so but then
Yeah.
There's one of these
But that's what we talked in the past.
Again, Jay.
Yeah. Right, because it is not private property, so to speak, as well. So, but that's one of the other things that have been talked to us, Maggie, it's really a more holistic picture. Getting like a I'm going to say a biodealologist to come in and tell us, okay, where would the water, where would be a good place to put a swale? Is it one of those bio lots to get the slow thing down? So really, it's a bigger project than, but it well.
Destinated places for it to expand.
Yes.
Anyway. Here. I'm through this.
So it would be cleaning up.
Street.
Purely though, also on Maple, outside, across the street from Mario's, that wall is tipping in.
Right.
There's a lot of issues there. But if we can get the flash flooding to not happen, it's reasonable here to be real bare practice, because it's a little more time to get it all right. And then the one thing that JR had is that we had that on the plate in the past and it kind of got chewed up and spit out, not on there, is the down, the down counter. So I don't know if that's something you guys want to revisit or has, has a hard ending for, for what's, what we can do.
Yeah, that's down country. All the way and look at every stream.
It's on there. We left it on there. I'm just bringing that up to everybody because if what something is added.
When I read the meeting minutes, it was from 10:00 and wherever they
Yeah. Nah.
Yes.
At first, that was part of the discussion and then it was decided not to.
Yeah, there was meetings wherever.
Oh, yeah.
We did agree. That was not, that was not a problem. All the story.
I know.
You know, yeah.
Well, all of them will be off and then the ones that didn't put a marking automatically helps those ones go up too.
I mean.
Yeah.
Do you Mike?
We talked about planters.
Those are the best.
And then the meat.
Problem.
Yeah.
They don't have
Well, they don't have a beautiful side street.
Here's the part of work. We made the question, whole section of arrows. Other question. Journalists, frankly, girl, girl. You know, everything we talk about uh, here. And like I talked to you on form of both, it's all trees, never said in the year, say I'm taking that
Yeah.
Because they literally up and, and so much deal with the rest. Any of the bill that you're, I can call. You know, I mean, uh, the yeah, that business. They got it all. Okay. We still want, we talk. And that did I think you're coming through. Mike was here. That was the first panel.
Yeah.
You know, we, I mean, they, that, they always are there.
Well, the problem is, is that
What do you have?
Well, so, uh, on this side of the street, our side of the street, the main gas on the north was natural, right under that line of strip. And so the roots were getting down hard enough. And then when they kind of hit a pocket where they can't go any further, the trees, we got certain, get stressed out, they crack, they sap out, you're getting sap on hard. So that was the issue with those is that they just kind of hit where that rock face is for that infrastructure and they start going up. The opposite. Right, right. I don't think we have like a fleet or something, probably, we just see that they pulled them out, they hit that same way every time. On the other side, we have the power plant, so we have to keep something that's so much shorter than power lines by power expectation. And so we're always talking to the top of them, and they do the same, get all stressed out, basically, but then Yeah, then they grow into the businesses, we have a number of sidewalks popped, which we fixed one on the city's side, but ultimately, the business owners responsible for that sidewalk. And so they were unwilling to have us put something in that planters, which then caused damage they're responsible for. So that was kind of what happened down, kind of like the all-in, that section of town, a lot of the sidewalks started popping because the trees were trying to find somewhere to be. Uh, and we did a survey, I think it was you and me, right?
Yeah.
We went into every business and had them fill out a survey, do you like the tree, do you want to replace? You know, did all that data, brought it to council, for what the business owners thought about it. And then we even had Rachel Oregon come in and she talked about doing some sort of planter or funding that through the Brenonia Improvement Project, which is kind of her whole group of pastor gardeners. And talking about, you know, there's interest in that. A lot of the businesses didn't like it because it, it messed up where people would park because they had a passenger, they couldn't open their doors and park printers absolutely on the roadbed. And so that was one reason, they then asked to replace them with a concrete planter to put something in. Uh, so heard this and hearing the reviews, why, uh, we, and then we ultimately worked favor over all of them. And the works went back and all the holes got dug out and rock up a back end and favored so that they would all electric poles that were sticking out, I put them around injunction boxes.
That, that right there. That's able to handle.
But I think Rachel's still But I think Rachel's still interested. I mean, there's gonna probably need a few that don't want to close them. If they have data like something, try to business it better, and he does the one thing he does. So, the containers might be not kind of symmetrical like the trees were, and maybe some areas of the town would really like containers. And we'll put them or let's put them. Some might.
A lot of it. And, and.
Going back to the Navy, we used to have, we used to have those on the light poles.
Nothing very particular.
Yeah.
Never alter them. With the sidewalk. Forced that three. These people, and basically, you're almost certainly required. Okay, I'm there. And then all of them offside as well. There's a. Halfway through. And you never. What's your cost?
Twenty-three. Yeah, because it's like twenty-four times. The D3, something like that.
Yeah. So. Now, that's the time that we don't have a lot of money. It's quite, it's quite. And. You gotta. We spent a lot of time. Ever. Managing on the floor. Yeah.
Let's see if we're further back.
So I mean, one of the things we did in that council when we did do that, in discuss downtown beautification, I think we still have the budget, have a small amount of money, but putting some money to do some sort of something, whatever that would be. Yeah. Do a grand for facade upraise or something that we can. Maybe the main, perhaps, all those are icing. But there is that small pot of money in council committees, the permanent budget that they want to put a little bit more money in. One of those grant or grant. So you have a few people that are really intreating their facade and they're feeling like pretty much without any need for kind of extra stuff in the front, and they're cute, or extra stuff to tie the whole to the sense, basically.
Okay, anything else before we close this session up? We're exactly sure. Do we have one? Please, wrong. I'm not kind of.
Well, so that's the thing, currently, our engineering costs that we pay outright for engineering separate from being a pass group or someone meeting an engineer's review of being part of the citizen or a helm or something, don't need the threshold to need that. We're still under the threshold usually that would require you to go out for a.
That are going down.
We should, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Couple buildings over there. Yeah, I mean.
No, so they don't have meeting on formal engineering or anything like that. There's its third-party inspectors is what they're fighting.
Yeah, I know. But at the same time. I was.
Ultimately, Bruce, it could be anybody, the city contracts, because if the state really changes that, that stance, it could be someone who contracts to be your lawyer, to be your planner, to be, I mean, they could. That change could mess up anybody outside of being a city employee working for the city.
Now.
Florida Columbia, Kansas City.
And firm, that would be it.
OTAC.
Okay. What was the?
OTAC was, well, they had a lot of progress. They were doing it for us. So their funds were about a hundred and twenty-eight years.
Parts.
wastewater, purple plume, all of that.
That's right. But our client.
No, you don't, you don't promise. Yeah, you don't promise them that amount. You, you just know if you're gonna hit that, you have to have a formal RFP process to secure that person to work for you. And so, that's what we did with OTAC. And we just did amendments as we hit that. I think it's like three years or a certain dollar amount, I want to say it's like three twenty-five, that you can hit before you have to go back out again.
There wasn't a significant stay on.
No, so, remember, OTAC, John retired.
Correct.
And then we had a number of, and we weren't really. The working relationship was different with the new person. We were saying, here, we need this help and it was coming back, it's way bigger than we wanted. So we kind of. We need someone that's willing to be kind of standing there when we need them to do a project that we're willing to do, without someone that's creating for themselves by making our projects seem difficult.
Well, it's probably. That was it. Yeah. Well, the city danger for you, pretty much got that handled.
Yeah, so I have, the ones I have currently like happening is upper, often part three or Google, logging to Oracle wire, city danger trees, steeply sewer issue, city park, best required plage, it has a huge E P annexation project. Those are things all you've heard about, know are happening, are currently out of bid, in the works somehow. Or we've done engineering, we're waiting for the, the stormwater and possibly waiting for the three homeowners to figure out a pair, wanting to log that section and take the proceeds or they want us to cut them down over. And then that, that would be a project that'll be installed there.
We're gonna do the three. Anymore?
Yeah. Yeah. Then you guys still have to have that discussion, are we gonna keep that bigger ground? Wetland, do not backfill to make it smaller and make trees plantable, that area? And if we do keep it a wetland, we really need to look at the for telling, because you're planting things as we did and perhaps go back in and brush, clog, spray and replant there.
They never do straight up.
They did.
That forward, yeah.
No, it wasn't part of the B that that might be.
Guarantee to.
I'd have to look at his contract, I think we'll pass that. High.
Why would you? From the bid?
I think. I think there's. But.
I don't think that you would get.
I'd have to look, it's not there was a certain amount of time, but I don't think it's even a year.
Well, there's a certain time. And they have, they have to be free, ready to grow, five years. And if you don't do that. Sure, they fall. They'll look for.
It's down. I'd have to look, I think there are some time, but I don't think it's appropriate. Oh, no, I think.
Well, they all want.
Yeah.
What do you plan in that whole area? Remember what it is for a. Every.
No, it's like five.
There's some. They should not interrupt. They won't. Me. And we took. Also. It is a great, you have a lot. You have. Um. It's kind of.
Right.
And if we start breaking off and there's other fill that we're, we're gonna get down and place some structure and trees will not be able. Um. We will. If. There is an advantage.
Yeah.
In the sense. Talk about.
Yeah, I thought you didn't think of that.
Yeah. They. From a house. They might, that might find out. Right. Sorry. Are, are a little blood on there. That are naked.
Maybe it is.
Yeah. It's made, you know. I don't. Oh. Cross. Well, we're changing.
No, because I think our quarter, we, you guys bringing up issues in those different headings that you wanted to bring to the forefront that were problems you saw or things you wanted to know about in the different evaluation headings, kind of, as stuff gets. Like, if there's something you want to know about, what's going on with the grant or whatever, I don't know that we were going through these specifically. I mean, I can pretty quickly go through here and tell you what the timing is with the effect.
Yeah. Uh, you. Your other. Assist.
Yeah.
You want to have six, five, sit down, then allow reasonable expectations are.
Yeah. We could just do another.
I mean.
I mean, you've spent.
You're totally, yeah, a lot of. No sense in that. You have this thing. Then we'll be. And how to then.
And I don't think that back and forth necessarily has to happen in an executive session.
Yeah.
Once I have the. Yeah.
Words that I. Because it's, it's the, yeah, a review of performance. So I mean, as long as we're just exchanging information back and forth, that why it didn't work. But I think the commentary goes, well, now we hold you, we want to. Then that becomes a review, so then we got to.
Yeah, so I think that what I'm saying, yeah, was the first set up of like, hey, weekend of like, oh, February, this could be in September, or this is the twenty twenty-three item or whatever. The first initial run, I don't think has to be in executive session. From then, you're just gonna be taught to be accountable on one thing you don't feel like getting the time on in the, in the private meeting. Right, in an executive meeting. We're not gonna go through the list and compel you. Rick might have a problem with this one, he might have an issue, want to know about this one or JR or something like that. Then that would be executive session to record. That's just more of a back and forth of, hey, this stalled or, you know, I can give you more information about each little thing in connection to how I perform privately.
Well, you can see, right? So, why?
Pretty good, I mean, the ones that are currently happening are soft.
Easy to do.
Uh, some of them, I think. When I get dates to them, we'll change a little bit. The Corey those, all the stormwater master plans, those are way bigger and, and not just your staff doing it, right? So those are things we're gonna have to kind of, fuck the Florida Columbia, and if they don't have expertise, have to refer to somebody that specifically does these techniques, get an estimate on how long that may, if we give you all the data.
When you put price.
Right, or we may wait for budget cycles if we want it, want to hear or something. Uh, but yeah, we usually go through here and, and then some of them are kind of specific to committees, right? So you have like the play equipment and stuff, maybe in the River Park playground, well, the first committee's doing a recommendation account, all about that, so that one may happen, like turn in ver, right? Or the money, if the money is there, or the parts you guys through the request, you install something. So there's some of them that we'll have to play with what the committee is doing.
I think they're wrong.
Yeah.
The, the, and to return this is a regular question. That. I want. Um. Give me when we. Um, what do you think? Well, one is what we agree upon time wise, we've got priorities on the price. Of. Really. Uh. And I would say, in partially, it's our impression that we're. You know, it's. We reached that time wise and part of it's not done. Um, you. Because what the, is he, well, then you're set. You're set up. But it's. Well, I, I think it's unfair. Not a question. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's something to, about anyway, law is to hold more finer detail than somebody trying to hold the fuck down your mind. And then we get this one. So, city administrator, I have plenty to try to give a cast of, well, this one. This. Get in the door. I mean, we, we all, I think we all have some things that are coming in the whole of process to.
Yeah, it's very.
Should have that expectation.
Yeah.
There's not that one. Of. Doesn't. Quite. That was. And if we keep that, it will be. Yeah, let's say. I mean, Gavin, this is the current industry. And doing this, possibly short. You know what direction we're in. And it goes back to that. And the first part. Listing numbers. I would assume that these. As on that. Would be. Eligible enough to be. Ever voted or not. These issues that, uh, why are you? Things don't always. Check off boxes. Governor Wilson.
Right.
Over there. I think.
Well, very few of these things are ours and ours alone. That's kind of the issue, dude, but you're kind of hoping your partners or other. Network and timeline the same way here, you know, you work like a machine instead of being like, trying, trying to drag a stick, basically.
There are some of these. Well, the thing. Probably within our.
Yeah.
I would.
Yeah.
Um, but you're. You. A lot of mixed reviews.
Right.
So those are things you have the ability to do. And if you're not doing them.
Correct.
You have the ability to.
Right.
Other things.
And I had one question about that with the council. In my brain, the city danger trees are kind of broken down here. Are there some I'm missing that you guys are seeing in danger trees that are talking, aren't horrible, liar, aren't angry, man, or will leave your trail?
Yeah.
Because I can't read mine. So there's some.
Well, I have to start from the root department. And evaluated restatement. Or she property. And we've had questions. If this is three, I'm new on the last year, we'll look like, go put traffic around it. How I would track this round through. And which we have some there that the town policy gives them like track. But probably a little better than that to have in. For a day, somebody threw looking, you know, like we talked, maybe have something that could have been delivered or asked. Somebody. Ben Bruce, we walk in all different places. Or we thought about specific trees and then walk out. They're looking at. Well, we were a little.
So would you guys be okay if we changed that to city danger tree surveys live quality? Because that's really the subject.
That would be more.
Separate from the specific trees I already know were, because that's my worry is that you guys are going to see a danger tree. I am obviously not out walking around. So I think some sort of.
Well, pretty socialize. Are being.
Right.
You know, they're more. And during that period, the review. Become more active.
Then I'd like to kind of flush out what kind, I mean, the survey thing I think seems pretty easy, right? We have so many public recreational properties. We have so many places where insurance would say we're inviting the public to access our properties. And then if there's some sort of policy, whether it's that you guys want me to come back and say, this tree's by an identified and just like, no, we're taking it out. If you even care to know, we're taking it out. You know, that kind of policy that would help staff do whatever the council sees they want done with.
Not the manager. You have a person that now wants to stop. Quick off.
No, I know.
In the background. In the background.
Yeah.
In all. And people change a lot. You also need to have somebody know within legislative steps. Come to that here. Maybe. Either. Otherwise, you're going to have to face. That. That's just. Yeah, somebody competent.
Well, we have, I mean, Tim and I have done the survey. We have a spreadsheet. We were coming down, but I'm working from from council's perspective of what that expectation, I don't want you guys to be freaked out or Tim and I identify these tree or being or being like a cut down huge upper for the public and finding consensus. So that's what I'd like to more flesh out and have kind of a written understanding between staff and the council on what that expectation is.
What it's like. Like you back. Or you're required to do. One down, so. The. You hit on. While. We're right now. That's our city. We're in. You know. You've got pretty. Get along sometime. You have failed to do anything about. Well, I'm. I are now. That's the. I mean.
Yeah.
So are you guys in consensus that you want to change that to city danger tree survey or policy?
I would go.
Tree that we haven't heard from?
Susan, do you have some? About ten minutes ago.
I think let's finish up. There, Rick.
Yeah.
Change to survey slash policy.
Yeah, I'm going to write it down.
Because that way it keeps it coming or discussing this in a discussion. Instead of it just being some vague danger tree that I don't know.
That's what we're talking about. Thank you.
Yeah.
So. As a progressive. Of that. I mean, Seattle. One issue. One of the things we care to think that we can for office or whatever. Um, there are. Council. Lot of that and it's just. Seven, seven, seven. What is, what is the impact, the technical effect on the tree? And that was a question. Even those are decent. And like, I'm making sure that that's customary, putting dates on things. Because it's not like things are just early December thirty first. That's true. That you'll be leaving. You have to do this before. It's not, not like they're prescribed things. It's it's like budgeted. That's that's how much you're going to need. On. I don't know. I just. I just want to be really, really careful with that.
So I have a suggestion to address that. We have an engineering spreadsheet and in there it has a status update and what that update was and then the date that that update was made. So in that, if you have your timeline, when your expected completion date is, then there can be a status date and that would be where staff would say, when it comes to you, say, staff is requesting to change this date to this day because of then. So then in a year, when you guys say, wait, wasn't this supposed to be completed on this other date? You can go back and look at that written document and say, this is why it was changed because this happened. So then it's always documented. It's not verbal and something gets forgotten. It's written down. That's what happened.
I think what more what Susan's saying is that if changes happen based on something out of my control, it could either be the timelines force the city administrator to push crap way out. Or it forces that that person gets punished because of stuff happening out of their control. Now that you're saying careful, like this effect.
And how you can make that a city.
Right. Go for the next. Right. I think as long as.
If you're able to. Yeah. Being that. I stand. Yeah. And it ended up.
Now, I can't have.
My share.
Either sort of go the way. It could be a punishment for the first year that things happen out of control. Or there's some reason. And it could be that the course of them that extend the way on the need to. Or, you know, I think if one is on that, that this is. It is what it is. Some of that stuff.
So. Um. I think it's it's council itself. That it's. I'm. This is coming up. You know, there's a chance you has not scapped. Run on your own. You don't have a lot of people. Oh. And. On to the next issue. And you're going to interact around that. Within respect. And so there's few words that you. And. Expedition. Anything else? Well, I know we're included in this. Average. Okay. Project. Well, three. Five. And that was six.
Any of those.
Oh. A lot of them. I like. They are, if yours was a six, there's a three sixteen. I think I got. Longing for the. Or. I don't see any other.
In order.
They were.
Please.
Nothing. We sorted them out.
There's a couple at the bottom. No, I have the original so I can resort it.
Reaching.
I can always send out an updated one.
So what were you saying there? You're saying.
Oh, I was just, I wasn't worried about the whole, that's all. We face. Three. Yes, it moves. And then we were very long. Again, the time.
Which is why I'm fifty nine. Or he got. So he was at Apple or two. Two. Yes. Or put up. Something was anyway. That's that. So. So.
Most important. Um. Time. There's. Wait. You got to think. City. From this thing. That we've had a lot of long. Have it. All. All I got. These.
That's. From my perspective, there's still some things. Fun. Yeah. And they can be questions. Like that. If mine. After it's done.
There isn't.
I want.
And. Well, man. Well, needed to see. First one.
Yeah.
Like I'm down. But all that we have. But if we can. Personally. Like your plan. Uh. Right. It is a great. I like it. It's maybe. When I do this. Uh, more. It's for the. First. I will. Now, I'm lying. I already brought it. Fifty. That. This is all. On. I like it. Heard it all without. Oh, I'm on it, but she can't be. So. So that's. That's why I. Do. If you go off. Let's. And. That's. This is. We do. Where to work. Maybe second coming notice, we go, oh. And we, you want me to refocus and go here. Um. And then we're all on the same page. I feel like. That's the. We don't know.
I'd say it more of me kind of being like, sorry, this is going to the top and get something emergency happen.
Yeah.
Right.
You should. Go from there.
Yeah.
That's right. Um. Is this. As you look for. Already. Well, that person. I look at it too, is priority. And it's down quite. And it's down. It comes down to. Any that. So. As we can do it. And I like that. Think about skate park. A really positive note. But and I'm not going to say who or anything like that. But there's somebody in this community. And. So I, I think it's over next year to. Change. The more I saw. Awesome. Here's our other scavengers.
Bosco and I have one. They have one too.
All love.
The nice part about something around the reason their design, some of their cars to the four point. So it actually helps us to take material out for the non-material will bring it, it's got to be a push. Yeah, some of that could count. I mean, we we cataloged all of that. Every truckload that came out of the tally has kept track of. But some of it could count.
If it's down against the solid.
What?
You raise the dike?
No, because the dike is out of the floodline.
No.
The top of the dike is out of the floodline. So counted towards a tally of a thing, so to speak, for the city as a. I mean, that's. I mean, that's. Well, the neighbors would have a problem.
Those are those old. No, patch and. I look. Look rush. And there's no doubt.
Yeah.
Anything else? Closest. Overturning that. MPM?